Okay, we'll call this meeting to order on Monday the 18th at 7:35. And is Ms. Susan Taylor here? Will you come forward, please, and give us your invocation and lead us in the pledge? So let's stand, please.
Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us all safely here tonight. And we ask that you bless this team of All-Stars who have come before us tonight. May they be guided by your Spirit. And we also ask that you bless the City Council, that they always be part of your will, that they be guided and strengthened by you. And we ask that you bless the city, for it is a great city, but it can only be great as long as it is part of your will, that they be great. And we ask that you be with the people of Ferguson tonight, that you restore calm and that you always be kept in your will, for we pray in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the mayor, under the mayor's report tonight, we have three different items that we're going to talk about. And the first one is going to be the recognition of the Smyrna Little League. And Ms. Susan Wilkinson, if, coaches, if you would bring your guys up here and stand in front so we can, they can see everybody and we can see them, that would be great. And I'll turn this over to Susan.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recognize the Smyrna Little League 10-, 11-year-olds, their All-Star team, and they achieved the first-ever Georgia State Championship victory for the 10-, 11-year-old division. So I'd like to have their coach come up and tell us about, maybe speak a little bit about their team.
You take the mic, sir? Whichever one of you is going to talk, the mic. Uh-huh. And if parents want to make pictures, stand up and do whatever you need to get your picture made, that's perfectly fine.
Good evening, everyone. I am the manager Dale Pinkston, assistant coach Pete Warner, assistant coach David Watson. And these are your 2014 10-, 11-state Georgia champions. I wasn't prepared. Oh. I wasn't prepared to make a speech, but I think usually my parents know I have something I always say. So it is an honor to be here with the City Council. We really appreciate you guys coming out, allowing us to come out to say thank you and to honor these young men. They put in a lot of work in over these months, and they have represented the city of Smyrna very, very well. Everywhere we go, we get a lot of comments from umpires and fans and other teams that wherever you guys go, we'll come and umpire, we'll play against you. And we've always taught these kids to say, you know, we want to expand our universe. It starts with our community of 50,000 in Smyrna. We expanded it to our district when we won a district to other parks in the state of Atlanta, and then also expanded to the state of Georgia. So we, not only were representing Smyrna, but we told them, you're representing the state of Georgia. And that meant a lot to all of us. And I think we did well. I think we did our city well. I think we did our state well. So they are to be commended for their play, but also their fine character as young men. So thank you very much.
Coach, would you introduce the team members?
Yes. Ethan Mack. Evan Jamison. Jason Warner. Bryce Becker. Nick Addison. Chase Watson. Colin Stewart. Josh Mills. Ethan Ty. Drew B. Pinkston. Don Matigliano. And Jacob Peterson.
Let's give him a big hand. Okay. Congratulations and thank y'all for coming tonight. Thank you, guys. We're really proud of you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is proclamation and recognition of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And Ms. Anolos will present that.
Yes, here to receive this proclamation tonight, we have Elaine Zucker, Carol Palmer, and Renee Harden, and I'd love it if they wanted to come up, and anyone else who is here with the DAR. While I read this proclamation, which is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, IA MAX Bacon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Smyrna in the state of Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
On behalf of the Philbin Lewis Chapter of Marietta, the DAR, Daughters of America Revolution, Mayor Pro Tem Melanie Pritchett, we want to thank you for proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, as Constitution Week. And especially on behalf of my patriot Benjamin Franklin, I am thrilled. Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you all very much. Do you may have anything you want to say, add to what the other lady said? At least you're getting one more picture. Thank you all so very much. And next, we would like to ask the Keep Smyrna Beautiful team to come forward, those of you who are here tonight, and receive a proclamation. And Mr. Corky Welch is going to present that.
We have the whole team, except Anne.
Yes, except for Anne. She regrets not being here. She is at a conference, unfortunately.
A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of 30 years of keeping Smyrna beautiful. Whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful was created in 1984 as the Clean City Commission by the Act of the Council and City Ordinance, and certified by Keep America Beautiful on August 10, 1984. And whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful has brought in over 6 million in donated time, money, and services to the city of Smyrna since 1984. Whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful recruits, trains, and equips thousands of volunteers every year for projects benefiting all areas of the city, such as Adopt a Mile, Adopt a Stream Program, the Smyrna Arboretum, the Century Garden, the trees along Atlanta Road, tree planting at Broner Park, and periodic free shredding events, and holiday tree recycling. And whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful operates the Smyrna Recycling Center and Saturday Community Service Program. And whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful conducts its annual garden tour to showcase the beautiful homes in Smyrna and educate citizens on best gardening practices and resources. And whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful volunteers and staff worked with parks and public works to create and operate 95 plot community gardens for citizens at North Cooper Lake Park. And whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful salutes all who keep the city of Smyrna beautiful each year with an awards banquet for volunteers and sponsors, and a work-love luncheon for outdoor employees. And whereas Keep Smyrna Beautiful is a partner in education with all the local schools to work with local businesses and corporations like IBM to help improve their campuses and educate students on litter prevention and recycling. Now there, IA MAX Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, in appreciation for all the contributions and volunteers over the past 30 years, do hereby proclaim Sunday, August 10th, 2014 to be Keep Smyrna Beautiful Day in the city of Smyrnham. In witness whereof, I have hearing to set my seal and cause and seal the city of Smyrnham to be affixed upon this 10th day of August in the year of the Lord, 2014. A MAX Bacon. Before I come down, I just want to say to everybody here and everybody in the audience out there, our Keep Smyrna Beautiful team continues to, year after year, be awarded with award after award on a state level and on a national level. They do a wonderful job for our city, and I can't say enough about them. They just do a great job for us all. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. A proclamation, and y'all can get some pictures of you. And I know y'all are so excited about your new recycling center that's going to be coming along pretty soon.
No, you can stand up here. We can stand here. Okay, we can do it this way.
We'll move over.
Thank you all very much. And everybody who works with Smyrna Beautiful and does an Adopt a Mile and helps us keep the city clean, we honor you as well. So thank you all so much.
If I may say a few words on behalf of those present, and let me introduce those who stood before you tonight. Angie Bolton, Ed Plansker, Carleen McNabb, and Pam Dobbs. And we do have a few that are not with us tonight, and I would like to recognize them as well, if I may. And that would be Liz Davis, who is our chairperson, Keith Bentley, who is vice chair, Lois Lewis, our treasurer, Stephanie Bush cannot be here, Betty Williams, Neil Robinson, Lisa Castleberry, Eva Tackett, Eric Dennis, and Gina Bridges. And on behalf of everybody, we would like to say thank you to the mayor, council, and to you, Mayor Pro Tem, for honoring us in this way. It's with your support that we are successful. And we also want to thank the businesses and the participants in our program who come out and support what we do. We do it for everybody. We do it for the community. And our volunteers, of course, who are almost the best ever, they make the events happen, and we appreciate every hour that they give. So thank you very much. Our success is your success, and we look forward to many more happy years working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Keep Smyrna Beautiful. Okay, next on our agenda, we have land issues, zonings, and annexations. And I'm going to turn it over to the city administrator, Mr. Eric Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Item A on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for rezoning request Z14-017, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the construction of two new single-family homes on .41 acres, landlot 451 at 1051 McLendon Avenue. Sean Murphy is the applicant. He is proposing the demolition of the existing home and the development of two new detached single-family residences. The density for the site will be 4.9 units per acre, and a land use change from moderate density residential to medium-density residential will be required for this rezoning. Planning and zoning board did hear this case, this request, at the July 14th, 2014 meeting, and made a recommendation for approval by a vote of seven to zero. Our staff also recommends approval with stipulations.
Okay, Rusty, Ken, who's here is going to do this one. And then we'll let Mr. Welch.
Thank you, madam. We saw a similar request several months ago. This is the property that actually will be adjacent to the one that we approved previously, but has stated their two new single-family residents proposed. This is a lot split from one to two. The lot actually is a double-frontage lot that runs between two streets. They are more or less splitting it in half, and we will have two new houses facing different directions. You can see on the zoning map, the subject parcel, the property that's actually a dark green on the screen is the one that we previously allowed for a lot split there. This is the proposed site plan. So you have one house facing Medlin and one house facing McLendon. The proposed home elevations. And then pictures of the existing property. And then the adjacent property. Staff, as already stated, and the planning commission do recommend approval with the normal standard conditions that deal with composition of the home and stormwater management and any traffic improvements. Obviously, they have to follow our tree ordinance and their landscape plans. But we also are binding them to basically what they are telling us with regard to front side and rear yards. They will have a driveway width of 22 feet to the, back to the sidewalk, from the building face to the sidewalk, including the requirement to provide a five-foot sidewalk on there. I would like to say that we have had discussions with y'all about providing an alternative with a sidewalk fund establishment. That issue, when we came, started this request, was not at the place it is now. That's why it wasn't included as an option here. What I would request in this case on the sidewalk is that, or other alternatives means that's deemed appropriate. If you recall, there may be a situation where we would just have them pay into a sidewalk fund and use that money to put sidewalks elsewhere. So with y'all's approval, if you want to move forward with this, I would ask that you add that in item 13, where we talk about the five-foot sidewalk, to just add in, or other alternatives, yes, may be developed. So that gives me some flexibility then to work with Sean in this particular case. And then obviously, they're bound to the elevations with that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll leave you looking again at the proposed site plan.
Okay, well, let's see if we have any questions from the public, and then if we don't, we'll let Mr. Welch ask his questions. This is a public hearing. Anyone that's here that's interested in speaking, you'll need to come up and let the city attorney swear you in. And I don't see anybody. And so, Mr. Welch, I'll turn it over to you, and then if council has questions after you do your speech, we'll let them.
Thank you. Ken, I have one simple question on the sidewalk issue. Do you just want that added as an item where that you have the option, you have the option?
If you're comfortable with me having that option, in that one item where it talks about the sidewalks, I would just add that as another sentence right there.
So I don't have any other questions for the audience. I went out and looked at this site. It's a little different than the previous rezoning that we did, in that the developer is proposing to tear down the existing home and an outbuilding that would be near Medlin Street, and to build a house running on Medlin and a house running on McLendon. I don't have any other question unless someone on the council does.
Any questions from council? I think there's representative here for Mr. Murphy, but it doesn't look like we're going to need it. So I didn't mean to leave you out if you're out there, because he sent me an email saying that he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight. So, Mr. Welch, is no more questions? Do you want to make your motion?
I will. I make a motion to approve the zoning request Z14-017, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the construction of two new single-family homes on .41 acres, landlot 451 at 1051 McLendon Avenue. Sean J. Murphy is the applicant. I'd like to make that conditional upon community developments requirements and give them the option to require the sidewalk be installed, or other options as they may deem appropriate.
Second.
We have a motion to second all this in favor of this public hearing for this rezoning. Please vote. Okay, so we've got a four-to-zero vote in favor, so that motion does pass. The second public hearing that we have is a zoning request, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Taylor. Then I think Ms. Anolos will be working with that.
Right. Item B on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for zoning request Z14-018, a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for three single-family homes on .8 acres, landlot 560, 1396 Roswell Street. The McLean Company is the applicant, and they are proposing the renovation of the existing home and the development of two new detached single-family residences at this property. The density for the site will be 3.75 units per acre, and no land use change from moderate density residential will be required for the rezoning. PNZ heard the request at their July 14th, 2014 meeting, and made a recommendation to approve by a vote of seven to zero. And staff also recommends approval at a density of 3.75 units per acre.
Mr. Sedrith, you want to show us some pictures?
I am happy to. This is going from R15 RAD conditional for the purpose to allow one lot to be split into three lots. The existing home will remain. There will be a slight modification to that that the applicant can explain to you, but then there would be two new houses developed, and those two would be facing different directions as well. Again, you can see it's a triangular piece of property. At the backside of the property, they would split that and then split it in half. Once again, as shown on this site plan, you can see lots one, two, and three. Lots one is where the existing house is, and as I said, it will stay. But you have one house that will face Whitfield, and the other will face Walker Court. Proposed home elevations. Pictures of the subject property and of the area. And again, it's the recommendation for approval from R15 to RAD with the following conditions, again, standard conditions, which have to do with composition of the home and detention pond, issues dealing with utility and traffic improvements, landscaping and the like. Again, the setbacks would be a front of 15, side of 10, and rear of five. The 22-foot driveway requirement would, from the back of the sidewalk, would come into play as well. And I would also ask, if y'all want to approve this, that we do a similar issue on the sidewalk that we just did on the previous one. That that, that there's a possible alternative is, may be considered, if approved by me, on that, given the wording that Mr. Welch had done previously. Again, they have to be in compliance with these site plans. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Leave you with the site plan there.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this issue? It is a public hearing, and if you would like to, you can come forward, and Mr. Cochran will swear you in. If not, let's turn that over to Terry.
Yes, thank you. This is, as was explained by Mr. Sedrith, in keeping with what has happened in similar other sites throughout the community, it is, I think, and in my opinion, it is nice that the McLean Company is going to be keeping and actually making a little bit of, making a few updates to the existing home on the property that's been there for quite a while. They're actually going to make it, I think, look a lot better. And I think most folks in the immediate vicinity over there think that the home is going to look a lot better when the metal carport is removed from that site. This is something that I think will be a benefit to the neighborhood, and I think the new homes are going to be very much in keeping with what has been, with the kind of infill development we've had in this community in the past. So at this time, I would like to go ahead and move to approve item, I mean, 4B. This is the public hearing, 24, I'm sorry, item 2014-211, public hearing for zoning request, request Z14-018. It's a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for three single-family homes, 0.8 acres, landlot 560. The address is 1396 Roswell Street, and the applicant is the McLean Company. And this is going to be adding the addition that the sidewalks can be handled at staff's discretion. And, Mr. Cochran, if you'll correct me if there's a better way to say that, but I...
Yeah, I mean, I think what the point is, that the sidewalk will be required unless the city passes an ordinance that allows the funds in lieu of a sidewalk to be paid to the city, the funds that would be equivalent to the funds for the sidewalk. Is that what you're talking about, Ken? Kind of like the tree bank.
It is. We have discussed it at a work session about establishing that fund. It is my goal to have that information to you, probably for your second meeting in September. But I didn't want to have to sort of go back and deal with stuff that was right on the edge. So I think it's fair to tie that in. I would ask that it not necessarily directly be tied to the ordinance, in case the ordinance is delayed. And they're moving forward a little bit quicker that I would have that discretion based on what we've already, you know, know is the direction that we're going on. I know that's a little bit unusual, Scott, to do that, but I think we did get consensus that the council wanted to move in that direction. It's just a matter of the right mechanism. So I'm a little concerned if we, if one gets ahead of the other, then I don't want to be sort of in the middle. So I guess I need to have flexibility to be able to do it, even though we may not have officially adopted it on that. But do you have any law, legal words for us?
I was going to say, I don't get a vote. I think the way you've described it for a small infill development like this is fine, that it would be, the sidewalk would be required unless, in your discretion, you...
There's an appropriate alternative.
Yeah, you saw an appropriate alternative, and in which case, the alternative would be met, the condition of the alternative would be met. And we say that on the basis that we're working on developing an ordinance that will address this.
That's correct.
We just wanted to come back to mayor and council for that requirement, to lift the requirement of the sidewalk, if there is the equivalent of what we're going to have in the ordinance later, I understand.
And just to assure you all, I would work in conjunction with the city engineer. You know, it may be my decision officially, but as you know, we work as a team with other departments, and so at a minimum, the city engineer would be involved in any and all of those kind of discussions involving sidewalks. And any and all of those kind of discussions involving sidewalks.
Mr. Sudrith, and I guess Mr. Cochran too. I'm okay with the concept, but I'm a little concerned that we would approve a zoning that would allow any staff member to collect funds from a builder or developer that wasn't going to a specifically designated council-approved fund, like the tree fund or other equivalent fund. Just bring me some money, and we'll figure out what to do with it later. I mean, I really think there's a responsibility on the council's part to, if we want to give that flexibility, and I'm one who does, that we need to work with staff to get some kind of enabling ordinance passed. And I think Mr. Sudrith has until he actually issues a CO to get that paid, if that's the option, or say, you're going to have to build the sidewalk, which is the ordinance, or come back to council for a variance.
And that route indeed could be used, and I'm only throwing, it's a cautionary tale. Given where both of these projects are, I'm sure we will have adopted that ordinance before they get to that point. But since we've come through the downturn, I guess I'm always a little skittish about what we say because things can always change and things can get delayed. That was the only reason for bringing that up.
Okay. Again, I'm all for establishing the sidewalk fund for these kinds of situations. We've talked about several, but I think there needs to be an officially established and designated by council fund for that money to be paid to.
Okay. I think Mr. Finnell has something.
Ken, whenever I proposed this idea of a sidewalk fund five and a half, six months ago, we talked about this as a way for topographically challenged, or maybe some of these communities where we're building sidewalks to nowhere, as a stipulation or requirement to just cover their frontage on property, that makes a lot of sense. The quicker we can get this ordinance fashioned to allow for and within the window for your final approval of the CO, I'm comfortable with Mr. Cochran's reference to the ordinance that might be fashioned that would be a controlling factor to mitigate what Mr. Lenick had just challenged us with.
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody knows what we're doing?
With that language that Mr. Cochran entered for an upcoming ordinance that would direct and therefore control, I would second the motion with that amendment if so agreed to.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Everybody vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran and Mr. Sudrith for that clarification.
Okay, it's a five-zero vote, so that is approved. The next one on the list, Mr. Taylor, public hearing as well.
The next item on the agenda is a zoning request Z14-019, rezoning from RM12 to RAD conditional for the development of 194 single-family homes, 47.396 acres, landlots 274, 303, and 304, 490 Wendy Hill Road. Smyrna Residential LLC is the applicant.
Okay, is there a representative here from Smyrna LLC?
Yes.
Okay. So Rusty, you're going to do the...
No, Kevin's going to do it.
Okay. Ken's going to do it. You're just setting it up. Or Kevin's going to do it?
Actually, I'll make a public confession. I can do this.
Ken, I'm sorry. Let Eric give the background. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Okay, no problem. This particular property is the parcel that the city purchased back in 2010 when it was called the Hickory Lake Apartment Complex. And essentially, what this proposal is to replace what was over 700, 750 apartment units on that property to about 194 single-family detached residences at a density of 4.09 units per acre. There is no land use change required for this rezoning. The planning and zoning board heard the rezoning request at the July 14, 2014 meeting and recommended approval with stipulations.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sudrith.
Rusty does a much better job technically, so I trust him much more than I trust me. So that's why I have him set this up. Eric's gone through where we are. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion through the years regarding Hickory Lake now, rebranded as Smyrna Grove. This is the zoning part of all of the processes that we have been involved with. You know, we had an apartment complex there that had over 700 units. What is proposed is 194 single-family home subdivision. The existing zoning was RM12, and we're using the RAD conditional zoning classification to deal with this request. Y'all know where the property is on Wendy Hill. Here's the zoning map that just describes what I went through, as well as the future development map on this. The future development map does not need to be changed, only the zoning aspect has to. This is the proposed site plan. The main entrances will come off of Wendy Hill, and as such, they have acceleration, deceleration lanes proposed. There are three entrances. You have one off of Benson Pool and one off of Old Concord Road as well. There is two areas dealing with green space and amenities, and I think the petitioner's representative can address in greater detail those amenity areas. This also, the area would also include their stormwater management facility. If you recall, there is an existing pond on the site that was used for detention purposes as well. There's really two styles of homes that are being proposed here. The ones that are highlighted here in this sort of purple or violet outline are lots that we classify as off of proposed new right-of-way streets. This development also includes alleys, which are shown in the blue here, and these alley lots are a little bit smaller than those what actually turned out to be lots on the perimeter and off of right-of-ways, both existing and proposed. The alleys will provide rear entry homes. So you have front entry off of the right-of-ways, and you'll have rear entry off of the alleys. These are the home elevations. You have a 34-foot wide product, and you also have a 40-foot wide product, which, as you can see, are the houses that have front-loaded garages. These elevations would face the public right-of-ways and be accessed off of the public right-of-ways as opposed to having the garages in the rear as the other product would. But is of the subject property. And again, this has gone through the review and has come out with an approval for 194 single-family units at a density of 4.09 units per acre. Again, with our standard conditions, because of the complexity of this request, if you'll bear with me, I would like to do a little more detail in what we're actually requiring here in that we have the standard condition of the composition of the homes. In the residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, but not limited to brick, stone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. No elevation shall be comprised of 100% hardy plank siding. And then there's another sentence there that talks about the residences whose lots face this external roadway should not be permitted to utilize hardy plank for any elevation facing these roads. What that means is those four existing roads, they go around the property. Does it mean the internal roads that are proposed? So that last sentence is really dealing with those perimeter lots. Obviously, they'll have to have protected covenants. We talked about a common space, green space area. They do meet that requirement. In fact, I think there's over seven acres of this site in total is in green space in our amenities. With that, the detention pond we showed you, any traffic improvements that they responded before. We did talk about the deceleration lane that would be off of Wendy Hill on that. The standard issue about having brick pavers at the front or stamped concrete, you know, decorative streetlights, the tree ordinance issue, all of those still have to be met. All yards have to be sotted. And then the standard issue regarding some of the tree requirements. The minimum floor area here shall be 2,000 square feet because that's what we normally require, what we require. However, the site plans and the elevations and the floor plans that they have provided indicate that they, in round numbers, wouldn't be any smaller than at least 2,500 square-foot homes, all the way up to over 3,200 square feet, depending on which lot that they were on. Again, we have the difference here between the alley-accessed homes and the right-of-way-accessed homes, and the setbacks and the driveways are adjusted to reflect that. 10-foot multi-use trail is required along Wendy Hill Road. Again, we talked about the homeowners association, but in this case, they're proposing that they've got to have at least a two-car garage, no outside storage, shall be permitted with the exception of lawn furnishings and firewood and the like. And all their garbage containers need to be screened from public views. We're conditioning upon the plan that was submitted, as well as the elevations are being tied down. So everything that I've showed you tonight is what we expect to be built out there. Again, this is the 34-foot wide product, which would be the product off of the alleys and would be rear-loaded with their garage. This is the front-loaded garage, classified as their 40-foot wide product. Again, the vicinity map for Smyrna Grove, and I'll leave you with the proposed site plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is representative here for the Smyrna Residential? Kevin, anyone come up? This is Kevin Moore, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Wilkinson. Where do you want to give the background?
I'll forgive him.
Oh, okay. And this is a public hearing. Does anyone here want to speak? If you do, you need to come forward and be sworn in. Okay, and when y'all come up to the microphone, pull it down so we can hear what you're saying, and give us your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, and solicitor. My name is Stephanie N. Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S. I reside in 3523 Marcia Drive Southeast. Address is Smyrna, but you know it really isn't, 30082. And therein is the conundrum. I have been driving past that area for two and a half years, waiting for this moment because what it means is single-family residences and a use of space that promotes families, that promotes long-term investment in the community. And that singular pebble drop will make the concentric circles of long-term investment in Smyrna for generations to come. I am very pleased with the designs. They reflect a community and family design. I like the size of the homes. I am a baby boomer. I know you can all say you didn't think I was a day over 29. Thank you, thank you. And as a baby boomer, and we are aging, our concern has been access, access roads, proper construction of homes, and the care of our aging parents. I'm taking care of my 82-year-old mother right now, and it is imperative to me to have a home that I do not have to move her from again. I'm renting a lovely mid-century modern with hardwood floors that I adore, but I am looking for a new home and new construction in the city of Smyrna proper. My daughter, SCAD grad of class of 2012, Bangnam Gwangwa, is currently living in Vinings and has expressed a long-term commitment and investment in the community where she wants to live, and she wants to raise her children, my grandchildren, and our next generations, so that we can continue to volunteer in golf and baseball and soccer and make a longer-term commitment to this community financially, emotionally, and doing our civic duty to the city of Smyrna. So I applaud the opportunity to have 194 new single-family residences at that intersection. It can only bring greater equity to the homes that are already there and hopefully a reversal of what happened in 2008 with their loss of equity. I'm sure there are homeowners there underwater. I would like to see those homeowners regain that equity with this portfolio investment. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the next lady?
I'm Jill Evans. I'm the resident and homeowner at 371 Hickory Acres, one of the people she was referring to. I'm luckily not underwater, and hopefully in a year and a half, I'll be done paying for my home. And I'm very pleased that the city purchased the property. I know it was an item of great controversy. It was very difficult telling your, my daughter, who's now 16, who was growing up, the sounds she was hearing at night a block away were gunshots. I'm happy to see that it's going to be single-family detached. I plan to remain in my home another 20 years. I purchased my home in 1995, before the downtown was here, before all the great things happened here, and I would like to not have to move out of that house, but be taken out at some point. We are zoned R15 in my neighborhood, and I know that just doesn't happen anymore. People don't want the grass and the lawns. Developers want to squeeze as many pennies as they can out of the areas. I commend Ms. Wilkinson for her diligence in keeping myself and my neighbors informed of what's going on, and I think she has good recommendations that she has told me that she makes input for the zoning and things of that nature. But overall, I am a person who is pleased that this is coming about, and I hope we don't have any runoff problems. I did mention with her that there's already a pond there. Mr. Khalifi had built some huge homes about five or six years back, which were far too dense. I think it's nine homes on six acres, and some of the older homeowners on Natalie Lane in my development had runoff problems, but I noticed that they did get rectified about a year and a half afterwards. So as long as the city stays diligent with the developers, I think I can say that I'm in favor of this, and I thank the city.
Thank you very much for your comments. Kevin, you want to come up? And Ms. Wilkinson, you can...
Sure. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you all for speaking. Hi, Kevin.
Good evening. And for the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant in this application for rezoning. for rezoning, and I certainly appreciate their comments. I'm not used to that, but it was great to hear, and I think that they did a fantastic job of actually, I think, speaking to the heart of the application and the proposal. And you heard both of them say a number of times, especially very slowly, "single-family detached homes." And I think that's, that really hits on what this application, the proposal, brings to this property. And I said it at the work session last week, it's, I don't think in doing this for 20 years, I've ever said that what we're proposing is a reduction in units from a total of 750 to 194. And I don't think that can be overstated, and I think that really, and I'm not just trying to make it sound better than it is, but I think it actually goes to the fortitude that the city showed in making this decision initially, but probably more importantly was in making the decision to stick with it and to see it hopefully through this point to bring a single-family detached neighborhood and community and development to this property. A little bit about some of the specifics, and I don't want to repeat what Mr. Sutter said, but maybe hopefully expound on it, give you some more detail. Again, this is 47.3 acres. In a location that each of you are very familiar with, it's in a location that on the one side has commercial uses, intense commercial uses, and other types of non-residential uses that have shown some age over the years. And then on the other side, you start to get into the neighborhoods, the R15 areas that she just spoke about, which this property found itself in between. So the opportunity now speaks to what would be a great way to transition from what used to be there, which is why it was probably done to begin with, was an apartment community back in the eight days when something was zoned like this for RM12 for the apartments was as a transition. Unfortunately, what happened instead was, over a period of years, those deteriorated, and instead of becoming a transition, became a black hole for deterioration in an area. What this opportunity is, is an opportunity then to reinvigorate, revive the halo effect that she spoke about by placing the single-family detached community, one that brings amenities, one that brings a sense of community and neighborhood to the area, which not only provides really a proper transition from the commercial, but also serves to stabilize values and probably increase values in the area when you build upon the type of elevations and home designs that you saw, which I think will play and look very, very, very nice for the area, not only when you drive through, but from those existing public roadways, given the home designs and materials that are being proposed. In addition, the density at 4.09 units per acre, I think staff did an excellent job in its report, had a long table comparing similar sites, similar locations where this type of redevelopment, and this is true redevelopment in my opinion, has occurred, and this density is certainly in line with that table. It's not, it's on the very high end or the very low end, it's just in there, in that range, and I think that table shows it very well. As it relates to the amenity area, which I also think is very important here with the site plan that he showed just a minute ago, what you notice are two very large consolidated areas of green space slash open space slash amenity area. And that's done on purpose, so that you have very usable green space, not just, in some designs, you'll see pocket parks, or you'll see little spaces of green and so forth that are nice, and certainly add to the attractiveness, and when they're used and used correctly, I think they're used very well and can be appropriate. Here for this site, they believe that it was very important to establish a sense of place and a sense of community, so that the residents that would live here and buy here have that sense of amenity that's there for them as well, that helps with the value and keeping the value and stabilizing the value and the ongoing values and the sales prices of these homes. So what you have are really two separate areas of green space and park area. One you saw was a long kind of linear park. That's what I would call the passive park area. That's a green field-type passive park that uses picnic, throwing a frisbee, enjoying a walk, and that type of thing is the passive park area, which can be used in that nature. And then you have the more active amenity area, which incorporates the existing pond. That existing pond was previously used as a stormwater management facility. It will be completely redone, so that it can be ongoing as a stormwater management facility, one for retention instead of detention, so that it holds water and becomes a central focal point for the amenity and for the community, so that it can be enjoyed by the residents while also serving as a stormwater feature. In addition, that amenity area will have, while not shown on the site plan, it will have an active amenity of pool, clubhouse slash pavilion type area, so that it can, again, these residents can enjoy what other communities and subdivisions enjoy in the area that are of this quality and nature, and that will also be present. Lastly, I think importantly, you see by the design, the combination of utilizing existing roadways and the alley-fed homes provides for two things that I think are very important. Passing by on one of the public roads that already exists, be it Windy Hill or Old Concord or Benson Pool, what you will see, while it will be the backs of homes, as stated in the stipulations, those homes aren't going to simply be some rear-blank wall. They'll have architectural detail to them, elevations and materials that aren't just simply hardy plank. But then as you drive through this community with the use of the alleyways, then it presents itself as not just a community of garages, but you have front-facing homes that have the rear alleyways, so it creates a nice sense of streetscape, both inside and outside the community, that's being proposed here. With that, the applicant has worked very diligently, very closely with all staff departments, and has agreed to the standard stipulations that are proposed by staff, has also agreed and worked with, and is in agreement 100% with the special stipulations and conditions proposed by staff. Both staff has recommended approval, the planning commission also recommended approval of this application, and we're here to answer any questions for you tonight, and respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application with all standard and special stipulations as proposed and presented by staff. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wilkinson, you want to?
Hi, Kevin. Thank you for coming here tonight. I appreciate it, and appreciate all the work that you've done, as well as our staff and the developer. I'm really excited about this development, and I just, you know, going on a couple of things that you had mentioned just now. One of the things you mentioned was the amenities area and the pool. And I did have, because it wasn't in the site plan pictured, I had some residents that were concerned about that. It's another development that does have a pool over there in that area, and they were concerned about the density of this development and the possibility of, if they didn't have a pool, what that might, you know, create for them, the troubles that it might create. So I'm glad to hear that that is in the plans, and I was wondering if that could be added to one of the stipulations? And let me see what I was looking at, as far as adding it to special condition, as special condition number 24, that the developer will provide an amenity package for the HOA, which will include, and I think I've heard different things, so I don't know, you know, when we've been talking about this, a clubhouse, pool, tennis courts, or pavilion, or what that might be, if that could be put into that special stipulation number 24?
Yes, that's their intention, and they've stated that, and that is a commitment they've made, and certainly that could be included as well. That would be agreeable.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And one of, meeting with some of the residents that live over there, they were all so concerned about that if, you know, if there would be, might be, become a rental or too many rentals. So another request that I wanted to ask, if it might be possible to include a limit on those stipulations, special stipulations, as far as the percentage of rentals possibly? And you can let me know if that's possible?
We reviewed that, and one of the issues with the lending community is that they, we received a very negative response to us making that commitment, not because that anybody wants to turn this into rental or have rental, but inasmuch as this is single-family homes that are on, that are detached on their own lots to limit rental, it caused a major issue on our end, and this arrangement, this type of development and community doesn't lend itself whatsoever to the normal rental, because you don't have an influx of investors that would want to buy several of them at a time, unlike you have potentially a town home or an attached product, where they can buy buildings at a time and then manage them through a rental program through another company. With single-family detached homes on their own lots, where people are actually buying, you know, their home on their lot, the rental limitation would just be, it provided, it just provided too many problems for us to be able just to agree to it. Normally, we'd try to agree to anything we can work out, and we really looked at that, but it's just, it's something we can't agree to.
I thought that was decided by the homeowners association.
It would be ultimately, because it'd be homeowners association-controlled and covenant-controlled, and people are buying their own homes and buying their own lots here, unlike owning a condominium or a town home, when you really don't necessarily own the land, and you have shared walls and that type of thing, where you see that type of limitation.
Okay. I just, it was my understanding that we've done that in the city before with some rezonings that we've put an amount or something, you know, it's just that in that area, that there has been, you know, a history of a lot of areas with rentals, and so that was part of my concern with that, and also with the residents that live around there.
Absolutely. I understand certainly the why, why you would be asking for that type of condition, and certainly, certainly recognize that in other cases, other projects, that that has been a limitation, has been included in certain instances, but I believe the majority of those would be where you have some type of attached product, housing product, as opposed to where, what's really being sold here are homes on lots. And in a community such as this, to have a zoning rental limitation presents a real issue. Because this is for, these homeowners are going to be treated just like any other homeowners that live in the R15 subdivision, or any other type of residential subdivision or community, where you wouldn't have that. But I understand, I certainly understand the why.
Well, I guess, I wonder why it would be different than even the ones that talked about, you know, the no outside storage, or all garbage containers must be screened from view. I guess I would look at it like it would be something that would be added to the mandatory homeowners association, but...
Scott, can you address that?
Sure.
Does anybody understand why they can't do it?
Well, what I'm hearing from Kevin is that the lenders that would ultimately loan money for the, some of the construction of the homes, and then later down the process, loan money for the, to the homeowner to buy the home. That those lenders, in this market, you know, and the lending market's completely different now than it's been in the past after the big economic meltdown, that what the developer's saying, that the lenders would be reluctant to loan money on a house with that restriction, especially a zoning restriction, and, you know, it's different to have an HOA self-impose a restriction, and I understand what Kevin says, is normally when these restrictions are there, they're for attached products, not detached products, and the product's completely different if it's an attached product. But the lender, if you've got issues with the lender loaning money, that trickles all the way down, you know, and makes the development just difficult. If you think that, hey, I'm going to have these, we're going to have trouble ultimately getting home loans for people to buy this, because the lenders aren't going to like this, when they have a title examining at the courthouse, and they're going to see that there's this extraordinary restriction, even though it's done on rare occasion, it's extraordinary. It's certainly extraordinary. It's not the norm at all. And so it would cause trouble with people trying to get a loan, and a result from that, it just trickles all the way down to trouble with the development, and there are investors in these developments that want to make sure that they get their return. And, you know, if they're the only product around, or one of the only products being built now around that has this kind of restriction, it's just not a good business deal. So that's, as I understand, that's the business deal. That's a practical concern from the city to have something like that when we tie it to zoning, you know, which, remember, zoning is, a violation of zoning is a crime. We have a court here that hears zoning violations from time to time. It's a crime. And so, so from a practical standpoint, I think Ken would tell you that it'd be very difficult to enforce. And if you have a restriction that limits rental units to 10%, you know, or whatever it is of the residents, then who is it that violates that zoning ordinance if there are 11%? If, you know, if, who do you charge? Who do you cite? Do you charge, do you cite all of them? Do you cite the last person? Do you have to go door-to-door and make sure that the owners live in there? Just really impractical, and I think Ken would say it's impractical, aside from the market issues that make it so, it's just not something that people will do these times with attached homes. There's also, from our, the city's standpoint, a practical, nod, Ken, if I'm, if you agree, you know, I'm not trying to extend this, but there's a practical enforcement issue.
That is absolutely correct, and the city may have done that in years gone by. They haven't done it since I've been here, for the very reasons that we've talked about tonight. So I've been here for seven and a half years. We haven't done that. I do believe that years ago, there may have been a couple instances where that indeed was done. I think it's a fairness issue, too. Do you want to be the person that doesn't want to sell your house, but has to leave town for business, and has to move, and you want to rent your home? And you're the 11th percent? I mean, we really don't have those requirements on other areas of the city. I think it goes beyond what we normally would consider a physical requirement of, hey, you've got to shield your garbage can, hey, you've got other requirements that we list, both in the standard and the special conditions. I mean, this is getting to something beyond that, to say you cannot rent your property if you happen to be over that percentage, from a government standpoint. And I just think that's bad policy for us to get involved with, and I've never supported And that's not even touching the concern about how do you enforce that? It's one thing for a developer to voluntarily say, I'll put that in the HOA docs, and the HOA people can do that among themselves, because that doesn't involve us from an enforcement standpoint. Even if we get a call, we can say, we don't have jurisdiction there. So I do have a lot of concerns associated with that, and especially since the applicant is saying they are against that.
Okay. I've been doing real estate for 25 years. The only time I have ever seen a restriction on rental units is with condominiums and townhomes. Detached living quarters. I mean, attached living quarters, not detached. So, I mean, the fact that somebody says, if we did it, we did it for attached units, not detached unit. So I fully agree with you on that.
And just to clarify from the, not to beat this around, but I, which we've done, but I think it's important, because I think it's a great question, and it's certainly one that was raised by your, you know, by folks that live nearby. One of the keys, and I said it to begin with, to this proposed development is the single-family detached aspect of it. And why, part of why that is a key is because, in what we were talking about with lenders, is what Scott was mentioning, and that is really the home mortgage lending market for the home buyers that will be buying in this development, and buying in this community. When they go to buy their home, and these homes are, you know, being placed on the market, and the home buyers come in, it's unbelievably important in this day and age that conforming mortgages be available, and what our lenders were telling us was, that a stipulation or a condition such as that could throw it out of conforming mortgages, because those lenders, the lender that's loaning to, you know, Bill and Joe, Billy May and Joe Smith... that's loaning to, you know, Bill and Joe, Billy May and Joe Smith that want to buy a home here, that lender, that mortgage company that are feeding the home mortgage market might consider it to be out of the ordinary, non-conforming, and now you have a real problem with values and with selling homes here because now you're not in the biggest pool of available home mortgages and that being the conforming mortgages. So it's not just out of a, we want to reserve that right, it's more out of a, we want to make sure we're selling these to home buyers that can have available for them the most, you know, the biggest bucket of conforming home mortgages, and that's, that's what is driving this response, so they can be sold.
Okay, I understand. So is it something that you might be able to work with the developer on having that part of their HOA then? Because then, then as far as the city isn't involved, I mean, I'm just asking if that's a possibility.
They may consider it as a homeowners association at some point when they can impose that, but I know as the developer slash home builder, I'm representing to do this project, they're going to want to not do that because they do not want to endanger the very lending market that supplies the buyer.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Fennell has a question or wants to make some statement?
I want to make a statement real quick. Having just rolled off my HOA board when I came on here, four years HOA president, and in our neighborhood, the HOA has a stipulation, but we do have townhomes, we do have condos, and we do have single-family detached houses in our 955-home development at Vining's Estates, going from 180,000 from the townhomes to 1.8 million for some of the homes. So we have a broad spectrum, but the HOA itself sets its limit about protecting the valuation proposition because as the rentals in the community go up, the valuations tend to go down. So I'm opposed to the city stipulating on a single-family home neighborhood that they have this type of provision. I think that's the role of the HOA, once those residents who are living there are in place, they make their own governing decisions about things. You have 24 stipulations that you all have agreed to.
Correct.
With the 24th one that we added, that you just put some aspect around the amenity package, and I'm comfortable with that, and I'm proud of all the people who have worked hard to get us to this point. Four years ago, you wouldn't possibly think that we could be at this stage this quickly on all of the options. We've been presented an awful lot of options, from a Walmart to mixed-use development to more apartments. And I think with this investment, and this will be, and I pointed it out earlier, is the second-largest investment in the history of Ward Five. This is a seminal game-changing moment for that part of town. And the 194 new homes, the homeowners that it will draw, the energy and the taxation, the valuation proposition is a halo in the neighborhood, I think, is a net plus for the city. And over time, our net value proposition is solid. And I applaud the leaders who took time to tackle this site in the previous council, who stood up and eliminated what was a problem site. Number one on the call list of the police department, the fire department, the truancy officer, the drug squad, you name it. And those calls now no longer go to that address. Nobody was evicted. Everyone was relocated appropriately. And the city has an opportunity here with this investment to change that area forever to the good. And I'm proud of what this development represents for that part of town, for adding Smyrna, another quality residential community. So I appreciate the work that went into it, Financial Wizard Gordon Morton, the DDA, the committee that evaluated all these prospects, the staff who spent countless hours, our legal counsel, those people on that side of the ledger, all of our staff certainly. And we really appreciate getting us to this point for this historic moment, and it is an historic moment for the city of Smyrna, for this particular development. And I appreciate the hard work in bringing us this development with all the agreed stipulations that you brought to the table.
Hi, Kevin, may I ask a couple more questions?
Of course.
As I'm reading through this, I know that there are plans to put up gates at the entryways during construction, but could you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
During the initial phases of construction, yes, there will be gates. You do have a large site, it's nearly 50 acres, and certainly the site has a, has a past history. As was just pointed out, it has a past history that involved high rates of crime that occurred there, so it carries with it, and fortunately, that is slowly going away. It did have a stigma for crime there. In terms of our marketing efforts, we believe it's really important to start with gates as you begin to develop it so that it's not only secured as a site as the initial stages of development and home building occur, but that, so residents and then those who are wishing to buy there see it as a place that's safe and see that it's a place that's going to be safe. Now, as part of that, the plan will be then to remove the gates and then have these, these will be public roads coming through and being built to public standards. That will be made known to each and every home buyer and each and every person that comes, that those gates will not be permanent, but that they're only temporarily on the front end. But we feel it's important because, you know, we have to establish that foothold or that toe-hold to say this is going to be a safe, single-family detached home family environment and one to build homes in, and they just feel that's necessary so that the stigma's removed from the start. But they do come off.
Okay, thank you. Another question I wanted to ask was about the sidewalks that are being put in on the exterior roadways, and I'm not sure if you would be the one to talk about that or if Rusty or Ken would be.
It depends on what your question is.
Right.
Well, the exterior sidewalks, I see in the stipulations that there is going to be a 10-foot sidewalk added to Wendy Hill, and I'm just curious about any of the other exterior roadways around the property, or that 10-foot one, too, exactly where it would go on Wendy Hill. Thank you.
Okay, Scott. Okay. I'll start. Yes, one of the standard stipulations is that sidewalks will be provided both inside the development and on the exterior adjacent roadways, so that those sidewalks will meet the city's requirements, both in and out, to provide that connectivity and walkability. It's very important as part of this. And I'm just looking to, there is also a 10-foot multi-use trail that's along Wendy Hill Road, which is basically, it's a wider sidewalk is what it is, so that it allows for bikes and so forth, as well as pedestrians and running. That's also, will be right along Wendy Hill Road, which I think connects with the existing city aspects of that project on Wendy Hill, so that you don't have this project doing something different than the rest of Wendy Hills or that, or part of that multi-use trail system that's coming through. So it's making sure that that's implemented at the developer cost and also making sure the sidewalks are provided both inside and on the surrounding roadways.
The only one I saw in the stipulations was the Wendy Hill side, and that's why I wanted to ask.
There's, just, let me, I can, I was just, I was just looking just to make sure I was giving you an accurate answer. On standard condition, which is number six, it's that, it states that sidewalks will be provided by the developer inside and outside the subdivision adjacent to any public right-of-way, consistent with the city's standards. Then the special stipulation is number 20, which is the developer shall provide a 10-foot multi-use trail, because I believe that's the only road that has the multi-use trail. So it's committing to sidewalks in, out, and then the multi-use trail for the Wendy Hill side.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So are the, is the developer also adhering to the tree ordinance as far as, because I know there's, that was another concern, the number of trees that are there and that are going to be cut down, and so if you can speak with that?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The, and I'll just point it out so that, you know, in response to that question, so you have it, but you have stipulation that's number 12, that the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance, and all required tree protection measures will be adhered to by the developer. Also, there's an additional stipulation, number 15, that the, which dictates and requires the residential lots, each lot provide a certain tree count either, and it goes through the tree ordinance, that both dictated the number, type, and size, minimum size of the trees that have to be planted on each residential lot, and that's number 15. So the short answer to your question would be, yes, they're being required to adhere to all aspects of the tree ordinance.
Okay, thank you. The, this one particular resident that I talked to seemed to be very knowledgeable about trees and was very concerned about the trees that are, that he felt like this as far as citywide, that he would like to see us plant more trees that are native trees and trees that are, like, feed the birds and things like that. He thinks that our tree ordinance is sort of limiting as far as that. So I just wanted to make sure that we address that and maybe hopefully in the future, we can look at that with our tree board.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Terry, Corky, Wade?
I do. As, I was on the council that voted to purchase this property several years ago, and I am very excited about the vote we're going to be taking tonight, and it's for several reasons. We've, several of us up here have stated, and actually several residents have come and talked about the transformative nature of this project. And it's transformative really beyond just these 48 acres. When we talk about the value that it's going to bring to the city and return on investment over the years, when we talk about ways to quantify money spent, money, you know, gained from a purchase, money perhaps lost, you have to really consider what it means to be transformative, and you have to really consider and take a moment to contemplate what the halo effect is and what that means. When we talk about return on investment for the citizens of Smyrna, we're not just talking about the 47 acres, we're talking about what's going to happen on Wendy Hill Road, north and south, east and west of this development, what happens on South Cobb Drive, north and south of this development. What does it mean to put nearly 200 single-family homes into a community? What does that mean for commercial redevelopment in the surrounding vicinity? What does it mean for other residential redevelopment in the astounding, in the, in the surrounding vicinity? And what does that then mean for the tax digest of the city of Smyrna? And what does that mean in terms of benefits for the citizens of Smyrna for the next 20, 30, 40, and 50 years? So it's tempting to look and say, well, this is what the money is, and this is what the finance, and this is what the numbers are for this one piece of property. But you really have to consider and you really have to contemplate things that are more difficult to quantify, and that is what the halo effect, what the transformative nature of this project means for all of North Smyrna and for the Wendy Hill corridors and that South Cobb Drive corridor, especially that really do need the shot in the arm that this project is going to bring. So I do very much support this tonight.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I want to mirror what Terry said to a great extent, and I'd like to add this. We may not be able to look at a snapshot of the finances of this project tonight and be making money on the, on the property, because we're not. But we look back four, five years ago when the past council decided to buy this property, and what we got rid of versus what we have now, the opportunity that we have now, I do support the project. I think in the long run, it'll, it'll be one of the, one of the great things that, that City of Smyrna has going for it. When I ran for this office, I stated that I would always vote the way that I felt like was the best thing for the City of Smyrna. With that being said, I do support the project.
Thank you. Ms. Lomka, do you have any comments?
I'm sorry?
Okay. Ms. Wilkinson?
I do have another comment that I'd like to mention, that, because I was also concerned about the precedence that this development would set for the smaller-sized lots, and, but because we've talked to Scott Cochran, our attorney, and, and the way he explained it was because it is a downzoning from an apartment complex, I believe it was RM12, down to RDA, which is the single-family homes, that it wouldn't be setting a precedence in this area. So, thank you. So I guess with that, I can go ahead and move to make the motion of item 4C, 2014-213, public hearing for the rezoning from RM12 to RAD conditional for the development of 194 single-family homes, 47.396 acres, Land Lots 274, 303, and 304, at -490 Wendy Hill Road, Smyrna Residential LLC.
Second, the motion to approve.
Oh, yes, I'd like to say that's also with the additional stipulation, number 24, which addresses the amenities of, I'm not sure if it's, how we're going to write that as far as specifics with the pool, pavilion, or whatever else, if it's going to be a clubhouse or whatnot. Thank you.
Okay. You want to say something before we call for the vote, Wade?
Yes. This has been a long process, and I want to thank a lot of people that have been involved in it. Certainly, our staff, since the time the council first considered buying this property, has been heavily tasked with all kinds of work related to the residents of the complex when the city bought it, to the demolition of the property and the securing and salvage and surplus of items from the property, to maintaining the property, to advertising and marketing the property, and to working with developers, and finally, the latest group before us, to come up with a plan and proposal that could come forward to the council for a vote. You know, I think if you start with the city administrator, Eric Taylor, and our city attorney, Scott Cochran, and Ken Sudrath, Director of Community Development, and all of his team, certainly, I think you have to start with, with those folks. The Downtown Development Authority has also been involved in this, and I want to thank those members. They've been an integral part of the process the entire way. I'm in a sort of a unique position up here because I voted against the original purchase. That was a 6-1 vote, and I felt then, as I do now, that cities shouldn't be involved in speculative real estate purchases. And so the question that I've had before me, and as I stated to the Maryland Daily Journal last week in an article they published, it's the bird in the hand versus two in the bush. Do we take the deal that's on the table? Is that the right and best thing? Is that the highest and best use and the best return for the citizens? Or do we look for something else, something different? There are a lot of things I'd like to see there. Residential development like this is one of them. I'd love to see a new hospital. I've been very upset since the news of Emory Adventist closing. I thought this site would make a great hospital. I thought it'd make a great manufacturing facility and a number of other things, but those choices aren't on the table for us tonight. What's on the table for us tonight is this proposal for 194 high-quality, single-family, detached residential homes in a part of the city that hasn't seen a lot of new residential construction in the last 30 years. And I'm going to support the motion. My biggest concern originally and throughout the four years of this process has been what's going to be the financial cost to the taxpayers of the City of Smyrna. And the numbers, depending on the options that we considered, you know, could be very small to very huge. The initial bonds that we issued were almost 16 million. If you look at what the city would pay in principal and interest over the life of the bonds through 2035 or thereabouts, you know, we're up into the $30 million range that the citizens were going to bear the responsibility for buying that, that property. That's a huge concern for me, always has been. The proposal today doesn't net out zero, but it gets us as close to zero as I think we can reasonably expect, and that's a big part of my reason for voting to support this. The property taxes, if, if we do this deal, if the council approves this deal, and we issue some new bonds to finance some of this, pay off some old bonds at higher interest rates with the proceeds of the sale, we're financing through 2027, I believe. with the proceeds of the sale, we're financing through 2027, I believe. The cost for that has to be offset against the property taxes that the city will generate from these new homes as they're built and put on the tax digest and on the tax rolls. And it's not a one-for-one trade. In walking down the steps and coming to the meeting tonight, Gordon Morton, the city's financial advisor, and I were talking about that, even walking into this room, still trying to understand it. And I don't know, there's so many variables, it's hard to say exactly what that number might be. It might be 5 million. I don't know what it is precisely. But it's not 30-something million, and it's not even 15 or 20 million that I thought it might be last week. It's a much smaller number. If we get the halo effect that we hope to see from this development, if we get the redevelopment of the surrounding area to come, that very easily could be balancing out the cost to the city or even generate positive revenue, which I hope it does, positive redevelopment, brings more families to Smyrna, generates additional tax dollars. As the tax digest grows, my theory has always been, my philosophy, that we can cut those individual slices for the individual taxpayers thinner and thinner and thinner, because we've got more revenue to deal with. And over the last 25 years, we've done that. We've cut the property tax rate in Smyrna 25%. And I'm proud of that record. This can help us do that in the north part of Smyrna. I'm not going to get into whether this was the right or the wrong deal in 2010 when the city bought the property. That council made the decision. When that decision was made, my goal wasn't to argue with the decision. My goal was to try to do the very best thing for the citizens of Smyrna, to get that money back, to put this property back on the tax rolls, and to generate the most positive redevelopment of that area that we could possibly get. And I think this proposal meets all those requirements. I'm excited about the proposal. I hope it goes better than we expect, and, you know, everybody walks away happy. I particularly want to thank the committee that was formed a year, year and a half ago by the mayor, to look at development options for this property. That included on the council, council members Andrea Bluestein and Susan Wilkinson, included on the Downtown Development Authority, that's Vice Chair Doug Stoner, and members Jim Domer and Kevin Draw, and obviously, a lot of staff support, in particular, Tom Boland as the principal liaison, working again with Raymond James and Gordon Morton, our financial advisor, and all kinds of resources in the city. Before I accepted the chairmanship of that committee, I asked for and received priority of effort. I said, if we're going to do this, then this is going to be the most important thing for us to do. And if I say I need X, Y, and Z, whether that's staff time, or travel funds, or whatever it is, then I want a commitment from the council that they will honor that. And the council did, and I want to thank them for that. They've made this a priority. This has been a priority for a long, long time. And I think we're at a point tonight where we ought to feel good about the net result. We want it to be, as Terry Anulowit said, transformative. We want it to do, have the halo effect that the Market Village had when we opened it in 2002. We want this to repay the citizens of Smyrna for their investment in the property. And I thank these developers and builders for having the courage to come to a part of Smyrna that hasn't seen this kind of development in a long, long time, and put a very big financial stake into the ground and say, we're going to take our chances with the City of Smyrna, and we're going to take our chances in this part of Smyrna. So, again, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I do support this motion, and thank everyone for being a part of it.
Okay, thank you. I do want to add something to it. I'm, I was councilwoman, Ward 1, as well as the Mayor Pro Tem. I too voted to do this project. And everything that Terry said, I totally agree with. It is a rewarding moment to me to have this on the agenda tonight, and I do want to thank Kevin, I want to thank the Smyrna Real Estate LLC people for taking that chance. It is a chance, but it's a chance that they're taking, because they're putting their money in it. We took a chance when we tore down the apartments, got rid of the crime, got rid of the drugs, got rid of the murders, and this drain on our police department, on our fire department. Everybody has worked very diligently to try to bring this together. Very complicated parts of it. The financial part, we left to the financial people. That's what they're, that's what they're there for. They're the ones who know the smart, the smart guys, like Gordon Morton and some of his team and that sort of thing. But we did the right thing for our, for our community. There's no doubt in my mind that this is not going to be successful, and it's going to be successful beyond everybody's imagination. So, I do thank you for listening to me, and it's time for everybody to vote. Okay, that's a 5-0, and congratulations, Smyrna. Next up is Mr. Lenica. Lenica, approval of extended work hours requested by Chicken Coop, which is Zaxby Chicken.
Mr. Taylor, would you give us some background, please?
I certainly will. As Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, Chicken Coop 3RE LLC has come to us and requested approval of extended work hours for the construction of the new Zaxby's restaurant at 1420 Spring Road. They've actually come in and requested extending the work days by two hours during the week. I'm sorry, extend the workdays for two hours for the duration of the project. The proposed new work hours will be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Staff does support that. I also want to say for the record that they also requested a extending for pouring beginning at 3:00 a.m., which staff does not recommend and is not part of this approval. So, we do recommend approving extending workdays from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturdays, with conditions.
Mayor Pro Tem, this is a public hearing. Do you want to see if there's any public comment?
Any public comments regarding the Zaxby's? I think I'm excited about Zaxby's coming. Go ahead.
Thank you. I did have a meeting last Monday night with the Montclair Town Homes Homeowner Association. Got to speak at their annual meeting and ask questions. We talked a lot about Zaxby's, and the owner of this business, Dustin Mullis, was kind enough to come and attend and answer a lot of questions and bring the latest plans. You've all seen the construction going on at the corner there, Atlanta Road and Spring Road. And, you know, I think generally, the community is excited about the old gas station disappearing and something new coming there that'll be attractive at the gateway to our downtown. I basically agree with the staff recommendation, and the input I had from the homeowners who live adjacent to there supported that. I don't think I can allow construction to begin at 3:00 a.m. right behind the bedrooms of residential homes. That's just not appropriate. If it's in the middle of an industrial park, I'm okay with it, but not right next to homes. So, I definitely don't support that. There are also a couple stipulations that staff recommended if this did go forward. One, condition one is that all lights used for extended business hours shall be directed in a manner not to affect surrounding residential properties. All lights shall be kept on site and shall not escape the perimeter of the site. And again, that's very important, because this site backs directly up to the bedrooms of several buildings of Townhomes in the Montclair development. Condition number two is, reads as follows, "Zaxby's and their contractors shall mitigate noise disturbance between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on weekends, the extended hours, and on Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the extended hours." And I think that's appropriate. And so, I'm going to move approval of the extended work hours for Zaxby's at 1420 Spring Road, which will begin immediately from, let me see here, make sure I get it right, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's my motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second.
I will just add that if everything goes well and construction continues like it's going and weather cooperates, they're hoping to be open October 10th, plus or minus, and we wish them good luck and appreciate their efforts to work with us on this project.
Okay, it's time to vote. Excuse me. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to having some Zaxby Chicken in the future. Next is formal business. There is one item on the agenda, and I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Welch, since I'm not sitting in a council seat tonight.
This may be the only chance I ever have to make an appointment to Ward number one. Thank you, Madam. I would, at this point, I'd like to make a recommendation to appoint to the Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Ron Roberts, for a term not to, for a term to expire on December 31st, 2015. Mr. Roberts is a resident of Argyle Estates, I believe. Is Mr. Roberts here by any chance?
No, he's not here. He's not coming.
Make that in form of a motion.
Okay. Do I get a second? Let me go and give me a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. Okay, that's 4-0. Issues of a commercial building permit?
Yeah, this is, actually, I'll do the next two items together, since there are two different permits, but it's for the same, essentially the same development here. Item A is issuance of a commercial building permit for Building B of the Old Ivy Village Shopping Center, 4.369 acre tract, land lot 677, 4320, East-West Connector, Columbia Properties. This is 8,500 square feet with a total estimated cost of construction of $698,000. Joe and Guy Company will be the general contractor for the project. The next item is also at the same property, issuance of a commercial buildings permit for the Sprouts Farmers Market at the Old Ivy Village Shopping Center, also the 4.369 acre tract, land lot 677. And this is for a, an estimated construction cost of $2,800,000, with Joe and Guy Company to be the general contractor for the project, with 28,103 square feet. Staff recommends approval for both of these.
Mr. Lenica, you want to do that?
Thank you. I move approval of item 2014-257, the commercial building permit for Building B of the Old Ivy Village Shopping Center, 4320, East-West Connector for Columbia Properties. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everybody vote. Okay, that's a 5-0.
Next, I'd like to move approval of item 7B, item number 2014-258, issuance of the commercial building permit for the Sprouts Farmers Market at the Old Ivy Village Shopping Center, 4330, East-West Connector for Columbia Properties.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second.
And I'd just like to say, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I think all of Smyrna is excited about this Sprouts Organic Grocery Store coming to Smyrna and building and opening sometime in 2015.
That's awesome.
We are looking forward to it. That is a 5-0 vote. And now, Mr. Taylor, will you take us to the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the August 4th, 2014, mayor and council meeting minutes. And item B is a ward of RFQ 15-002 for Bronner Hall exterior painting to the lowest bidder, Drennan Painting, for $26,000, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. I'll vote whether you're in favor or not. Okay, that carries 5-0. Next, we have committee reports, and we'll start with Mr. Ron Fennell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The summer's coming to a close. We're, we have kids in school. If you would, just join with all of us and make sure that when you're around the school zones, that you do not use your cell phones, that you're highly alert and attentive if you're the parent responsible, and if you're traveling near the schools, to be expressly attentive. Adding to that, as you know, the school buses have cameras on them these days, and the schools require you to stop to take care anywhere around where there is activity of a school bus, particularly when it has its flashing lights on. With that reminder, I'd like to call on Chief Roy Akery to give a little update from the Fire Department. And while he's coming, I know Chief Lee will want to make his way, if he can, in this direction.
You know, I'm sure he appreciates you giving him that time, too.
Lieutenant, 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 sorry.
So, for tonight, I brought, for the sake of introduction, six of the newest members of the City of Smyrna Fire Department. They're joined by their lead instructor from our Training Division, Lieutenant Jason Evangelista, and they are, the new members are Roman Henderson, Talmage Floyd, Ronald Sadowski, Michael Phelps, Jason Haynes, and Charles Strickland. They are probably three quarters of the way through with their probationary academy, and they're going to be on shift in just a few short weeks. Guys, we turned around this way, too. Wanted to introduce them to everybody. So, we didn't rehearse that part. So, before we all get to meet again, they're going to be, they will have graduated, they'll be assigned to a shift, and they'll be dispersed to the stations in the shift. So, we thought we'd take an opportunity tonight to really kind of brag on them a little bit. When this process, to find these six first started, we had a little over 200 applicants. And through the arduous process that we go through, these six made it through. And I think that that fact alone says a lot about who they are and what their commitment is. So, we're very proud to have them as the newest members of the City of Smyrna Fire Department, and so far, they are absolutely exceeding expectations and doing us all very proud. So, I just wanted to bring them up and tell them congratulations so far and give you guys an opportunity to meet them. And thank you to Lieutenant Evangelista for all the hard work he's done so far, too, with the recruit school. But that was it. And I also told them they all had to give a five-minute speech each, too, so, just kidding. Okay, yes, sit back.
Thank you so much for coming.
The only other thing I had was just an update on Ready Smyrna's whole community preparedness events that we have for this fall. One thing that we've done is we've branched out and we've, we've reached out to some of our faith-based organizations here in the City of Smyrna. And on Sunday, September the 29th, during church service, we're going to ask those faith-based organizations willing to participate to join the rest of churches in City of Smyrna and have a preparedness-type exercise, whether that's a tornado drill or whatever they choose to do. That'll be Sunday, September 29th. And on Wednesday, October the 1st, we will have all of Cobb Schools within the City of Smyrna, private schools, assisted living facilities, and daycare facilities, along with other Smyrna businesses, join in a community day of action again. And that's Wednesday, October the 1st at noon. We've also organized our first CERT team, which is Community Emergency Response Team in Oak Hills subdivision in Ward 7. So, we're real proud of what's going on with our community preparedness activities. It's really having a pretty significant systemic effect. We've formed a citizen court council, and their, their job is to reach out to all the many facets of what it is that makes up the City of Smyrna. So, we're proud of what they're doing.
Chief, thank you, and the team that have been working for months for the Ready Georgia, the Smyrna National Participation, the Prepare-A-Thon, and all the work that went into making us a national-profile city at the outset. That was well done to get us to that point. As we go forward, you mentioned the CERT teams and the Ward 7 residents of mine that are participating are excited about it. Beau and some of the guys are really proud of being involved in that. And how does a neighborhood approach about being a part of that so that the public can prepare?
Well, we intend to use what's going on in Oak Hills as a pilot, if you will, to the formation, the partnership between the Emergency Management Agency, the Fire Department, and any community. And we're using this, using that Oak Hills subdivision as a testbed, if you will, as a pilot program. And we intend to have a product deliverable on our website, readysmyrna.com, for the, for the spring. I've already had two other neighborhood HOAs reach out to me wanting to know more information about CERT. So, through this process, through the fall, in the formation of the Oak Hills team, we'll be able to have a product to deliver to any community that's so interested. be able to have a product to deliver to any community that's so interested.
Very nice. And one last thing, I, along with others on council, was disappointed to learn and stunned at the loss of our community hospital. And I know that we've built a true partnership. Bob Crowe's been an active member of our Prepare Team. And I know that our Joint Emergency Operations Center located at that facility has been an important addition to our program of work. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because it's going to be in a building that may remain open after the hospital closes.
It will, and we're still keeping our fingers crossed. As you've mentioned, we've always had an emergency operations center. We had the opportunity a little over a year ago to enter into a public-private partnership with Emory and Venice to have a joint emergency operations center shared by both facilities, both staffs. It is a more hardened structure than our original emergency operations center in that it's in the bottom floor of a, basically an all-concrete and steel building. We are still hopeful and excited, as Councilmember Fennell just mentioned, that that building will hopefully stay, remain open, and that would be an option for us. But if not, we will put our public safety heads together, and we'll come up with an equal option.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for bringing recruits in, letting them see how exciting these meetings really are and why it'd be better to be riding a truck, putting out a fire than being in here.
So, the rains should be gone for tonight, but the roads are still wet, so everybody just be safe.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Chief Lee is coming forward. I think Wednesday is an important day for him coming up. And we appreciate all the police department's done. I think he has a couple of updates that you might want to hear about.
Thank you. Yes, Wednesday, the boot comes off.
The boot comes off.
So, take my advice, if you're over 50, stay off of roller skates. You know, we've had some pretty significant arrests that, over the last month, and I know I've shared this information with you, which has really been phenomenal police work that we've been able to accomplish. For example, you know, we had the arrest of two bank robbers. You know, we had two bank robberies one day right after each other, and we arrested both of those people within minutes after happening. Let me tell you, and that's just, it just doesn't happen, you know. And we had, you know, some really good people out on the streets doing a fantastic job. And it just, you know, I can't be any more proud of them. You know, we've had a couple significant drug arrests recently, and, once again, it's, the officers doing such a great job, working through, making sure all those i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and, you know, we're, one of them is still ongoing, and we look to really, hope to get some good things out of that. Some other things we've done recently at the Rome Braves game, which is a minor league A-team for the Braves, our color guard presented the colors during the National Anthem there. One of the things we hope to do is start working our way into the major leagues and...
We can get that done. They'll be our neighbors soon. We'll get that done.
Yes. But, so we're real excited. And it's great for them, too, because, you know, they put in a lot of time, you know, practicing for these events and get the chance to do it, especially, you know, the ballgame where you have a lot of, a lot of people there to see, you know, how good they are. And when, I used to live in Carlsville, I used to go to the Rome Braves game, so getting to see some of the color guards who, I'll just say, they weren't as good as ours. So, you know, it does give you good joy. We're also in the process of putting together a recruitment video. We've got JPM Productions, we've been working with them to get a recruitment video done, and they're just about done on that. So, when we got the finished product, you know, we'll send a copy out to all of you. Our next Citizens Academy, of course, it's all selected, and we're starting on September 8th. So, this is our fourth one, and such a great time. It's, we always have a lot of good questions that come up, and the people that go through it, just, it's such a good tool to let people know what we're doing. And it's always a big eye-opener for the ones who watch all the CSI shows to show that it really doesn't happen like that. And then the last thing is that, on the 27th of next month, we have our semi-annual National Drug Takeback Program, which, you know, we always looked at, because it was good getting old medicines out of cabinets. So, a lot of times, you'd have grandparents whose grandchildren sometimes get into it. But having been working with Ann Kirk a lot more, I didn't realize what a danger it was when people would just even flush all those drugs down the toilet. So, it's really kind of a win-win for both of us. So, we're real excited with that. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to say one thing, just getting us off of schedule a little bit, but we have somebody here that has a birthday.
Oh, birthday girl.
Terry Nolowicz's birthday is today, and she's going to leave so she can have dinner with her family.
Absolutely. Happy birthday.
Give me the bearish.
I'm not going to sing, so save you that.
Okay, Mr. Lenika.
I had two quick items on the way out. Again, I want to just wish you happy birthday and thank you for all you do, the hard work you do on this council. But want us to remember in our prayers, the mayor, as he continues to recover, it's a minor surgery, but it had to be done, and I think it'll help improve his day-to-day demeanor, which we need. What? Did I say that out? Nobody's listening. You're the only one listening, though. And secondly, Jack Halpern lost his mother over the weekend, and I want us to remember he and Lynn and the family in our prayers. So, thank you.
Mr. Lenika.
I'll be very brief. Court Services nor Human Resources has a report tonight. Again, just want to thank the Montclair Town Home HOA for inviting me to attend their annual meeting last Monday night. And happy birthday, Mrs. Nolowicz, and I yield.
Hi, I'll say happy birthday to Terry, so she can leave first, and then I'll call Travis Landen from the Parks and Recreation Department to give us his report. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm City Council. Small order tonight. On behalf of Steve, as he goes out on vacation, we'll have staff tomorrow going to attend a meeting, actually, a training on grants at Chattahoochee Nature Center. This is an opportunity to get back into the grant application process, to possibly get into the groove for North Cooper Lake, I mean, what, North Cooper, for the trails out there. And that's the only thing on that agenda. On a personal side, for professional development, and with the blessing of Steve and the council as well, I'll be attending director's school starting this coming weekend. I will leave out on the 29th. It's at the Yogo Bay Resort in Willing, West Virginia. So, hopefully, that's something that can continue to build on the professional development and bring some things here to the city and continue to build our department. So, with that, I yield. All right. Any questions?
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
And I want to wish a get well for Mary Moore, because she is sick tonight, so we won't have a report for the library. With that, I yield.
Okay.
Thank you. I see Virginia out here. Do you have a report this evening? From Keep Smyrna Beautiful.
There seems like there's always something going on in our world. Ann is out of town on, at a retreat, not a retreat, but a conference this evening, so on her behalf, I'll make this report. First off, I would like to say thank you, a very special thank you, to Pat Terry, who performed at our 30th anniversary party on Sunday, the 10th. It's just wonderful to have some local talent here and have him willing to share that with us on such a momentous day. And thank you also to the Parks and Recreation Department and the staff for allowing us to use the beautiful Bronner Hall for the event. It was just absolutely perfect. I wish I could have been here, but my dad turned 90, so I felt like I needed to be with my family. And happy birthday, Terry. On another note, the recycling center will be open on August 30th. That is the Saturday before the Labor Day holiday. I just wanted to let the citizens be aware of that. A couple of upcoming events. We will have a free document shredding and shoe collection event on Saturday, September 13th. This event will be held at the Alain Wolf Adult Recreation Center, and that's at 884 Church Street. There are just a few basic requirements. We ask that citizens bring 100 pounds of paper to be, up to 100 pounds of paper to be shredded. That's the equivalent of about four computer paper-sized boxes. We ask that so that we can keep the cars moving through rather quickly. You can go through a second time if you want to. Also, the shoes we will be collecting that day, usable and unusable, any type of shoe, athletic shoes, fashion shoes, whatever, they can be repurposed to be used locally, as well as we ship them out. And we don't ship them out, but they will be shipped out internationally. So, it's a huge effort to keep those items out of the landfill. My last note, our work glove luncheon will be held on September 24th. This is Keep Smyrna Beautiful's way of saying thank you to all the outdoor workers who work so hard in all kinds of weather to keep our city looking good and to keep things moving along as efficiently as they do. That event, like I said, will be September 24th. And if there are any businesses or individuals who would like to help with that effort and help support it, please give our office a call at 770-431-2863. And I thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council, for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Davis, what time is the shredding event on September 13th?
Thank you very much. It's 9:00 until 12:00.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, you have anybody else?
Mr. Stokes, do you have a report this evening? He was excited to come up here, I could tell.
Concord Road, as you can see, they're still out there working. AT&amp;T and Charter both have started to show up on the job site, so hopefully, I think by the, first week in September, they're supposed to be finished, Georgia Power can start pulling poles, and then they can start some of the roadwork between King Springs and McCauley. Contractors concentrating on McCauley and Concord, trying to, because that intersection has to be fully operational, because when we close King Springs for the road lifting of the roadway there, that road has to mimic that, the King Springs intersection. So, they're concentrating on that intersection right now. Atlanta Road's still, the stripers still on Atlanta Road, trying to finish that part of the roadway up after the paving, and then they're going to move over to Village Parkway. The recycling center's coming along, seems to be on schedule. They're currently working on the site, supporting retaining walls and curbing. They're also working on the inside framing walls. Belmont Outfall Sewer, the contractor split himself up. He's also, he's working also on South Cobb, between Bank Street and Pine Hill, and he's also over on Roslin Lane, working toward the Dog Park. Some of the projects that we have currently out for design, for stormwater work and some water work, I've got Hickory Acres Drive, Pretty Branch Drive, Smyrna Powder Springs, Crete Trail, South Cobb Drive is a water main project, Reed Street, Roswell Street, and Antler Trail, although, Antler Trail's actually an outfall project for some sewer, and then Reed and Roswell are both storm sewer projects out for design. Projects that are currently out for bid is our street paving and our Brank Street drainage replacement, small, small little job right down the road. Bid openings, HVAC controls for the Library and Community Center, and our city monument messaging signage, so those bids will come up before you on the next council meeting. And then bids for award, was awarded tonight, was the Bronner Hall painting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. With that, I have nothing else. I would like to ask Mr. Graves, if he could, after this meeting, maybe for a couple of minutes, so, I have nothing else.
Okay, Terry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, thank you. Finance does not have a report tonight, but I would like to invite Jennifer Bennett up to tell us what is going on from the Community Relations Department. The event season has really not subsided.
Thank you. No, it hasn't. Happy birthday, and also, I'm sure you already know that on this day in 1920, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women the right to vote. So, yay. Food Truck Tuesday, we're in the 16th week of the 22-week series, so we've got about seven more of those left. And they end at the end of September, so keep supporting the trucks. It's a beautiful event. We love having everybody there. We're still going strong. And then coming up, September 13th, from 10 till 6 p.m., we have Taste of Smyrna, More Food, and at the end of the event, or toward the end, is a concert with Francisco Vidal. I keep urging you to follow us on social media, Facebook, it's a big deal. We told you about the announcement for the hospital closing. You shared that so much that with only 7,000 people following us, we reached 25,000 with that message. This last week, when DOT told us not to, or issued the notice to not travel on 285 this weekend because of construction, you shared it, reached 18,000 people. So, social media is pretty powerful. That's why when we give you things like the IB program pass percentage rate, phenomenal numbers, if you share that, the power to reach the community about what's going on in your community and how good it is, is in your hands. So, go to smyrnacity.com to find out what's going on from our website, but go to our Facebook site, you can link to it at the bottom of the page. If you're not on social media yet and you're scared, just call me, and we'll get you going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the birthday wishes. It is the 17th anniversary of my 21st birthday. If I recall correctly, a lot of that was spent at the original Atkins Park location, so it just goes to show that I'm just destined to live within a few blocks of an Atkins Park location. With that, I yield.
Happy birthday, Terry. Let's see, we don't have any show cause hearings, and, well, wait a minute. Eric, you have anything? Scott, you have anything? Terry? No, nothing? Okay, no show cause hearing. We have one person on citizens input, and that's Mr. Alex Bakary, if you'll come forward, sir.
I am one of the many taxpayers that pay all, that helped to pay the city employees and their benefits. And after some person spoke last week on this, that you're considering on same-sex benefits, I'd like tonight, for many people, request that you have a town hall meeting on this issue. And have it advertised properly, where you can put it in the brochure that goes out with the water bill, and even use that aluminum illuminated sign out on Atlanta Road. There are a lot of people on, that are very strong to this. The state had a referendum on this, and it was turned down. And I'd like to see again, since it's our money, and have that town hall meeting on it. You also can work with Cobb and put it on the ballot for Smyrna in November. But Smyrna has a biblical name that has got a strong background. And for the people on this council that are sending a message that same-sex benefits and same-sex couples are legal, are going against the good book. And I just don't understand how this could even come up in the first place. I know of no other municipality that has this in place. And the Attorney General, after speaking to him the other day, has mentioned to me that, strongly, that we get an attorney. If this passes with this council, I want to give notice tonight that we'll be taking this to court and pursuing it further. And hopefully, it doesn't come to that, and hopefully, the issue, quite frankly, just dies. dies, because I think it's just incredible that the citizens here, again, with a town hall meeting, are emphatic to listen to their opinions and have this thing dropped, because, again, you're sending a bad message, and the voters of this city, next year in the election, I hope they remember, the council people who have competition, who vote for this and favor this, will, will remember it in voting time. But again, we will pursue it with an attorney if it goes to that, and I hope it, this issue doesn't go any further. And again, since Smyrna has got that biblical background, you may have to change the name because you can't have it both ways if you approve these same-sex couple benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make one statement. We got a draft of this domestic partnership, this is last week, I think. We have not discussed this. We have not had any in-depth discussion about it. I've gotten about 50 emails. The council has to have time to talk about this amongst ourselves, to look at records, to look at things that other cities have done. And I can assure you that we're going to do the very best we can do to cover it completely before we come out with anything asking anybody to vote for it. So, I just want to make that statement tonight, that we do have that information, but we have not discussed it, and we won't do anything until we do. And then, I'm sure it'll take quite a while for us to work through all of it. But I think your suggestion of having a town hall, Alex's suggestion of having a town hall meeting, might be very well received. So, with that, if there's no other business to come before this council, I will declare our meeting adjourned at 9:45. Is that correct?